Welcome, we're now on the record for a hearing on dismissal charges in the matter of Professor Joseph Gao before the active hearing committee of the UW-Lacrosse Faculty Senate Hearing Committee. This hearing is governed by the UW-Lacrosse Faculty Senate Bylaws Section 2.N and Chapter UWS 4 of the Wisconsin Administrative Code. The committee ordinarily takes up disciplinary matters in closed session, however, a faculty member subject to discipline has the right to request a hearing in open session under Wisconsin statutes Section 19.851B. Professor Gao has requested that the hearing be held in open session. Professor Gao, does that make your preference?
Yes.
Perfect. This matter began with a complaint received by interim Chancellor Morgan on December 27, 2023. Upon completion of an investigation, interim Chancellor Morgan offered to discuss the matter informally with Professor Gao prior to reaching a decision on filing charges. On March 29, 2024, interim Chancellor Morgan issued a written statement of charges against Professor Gao that she alleges constitute just cause to pursue Professor Gao's dismissal. Professor Gao requested a hearing on the charges which this committee is charged with undertaking. The issue before the committee is whether the university, by the chancellor's statement of charges and the university's presentation of its case at this hearing establishes just cause to dismiss Professor Gao from his tenure position at UW-L. This hearing is being audio recorded in accordance with personnel rules. Today is June 19, 2024, the time is 12:33 PM. We are meeting in the Omni Center in Analaska, Wisconsin. I am Dr. Anne Galbraith, Chair of the Active Hearing Committee. The other committee members are Dr. Alan Beagle, Dr. John Bunbury, Dr. Grace Deason, who is serving as the committee moderator, and Dr. Ken Bram, with Dr. Brad Seebach serving as an alternate. Attorney Noah Brithman is present to address the committee. Will the parties and their representatives please introduce themselves for the record, starting with the university's side?
Good afternoon, Wade Harrison, Office of General Counsel from the Universities of Wisconsin, presenting the university's case.
Jennifer Lattes and I will just be assisting Wade, and I'm also at the General Counsel's Office of the University.
I'm Betsy Morgan, I'm the interim chancellor at UW-Lacrosse.
The appellate side? I'll have you do it again, just to make sure it's recorded.
Hi, everyone, Carmen Wilson.
And I'm Joe Gao, former chancellor at UW-Lacrosse and current tenured professor of Communication Studies.
The committee will receive evidence in the form of oral testimony and written documentation. The parties have already exchanged documents and witness lists and stipulated a certain facts in evidence in advance of the hearing, and such materials have been shared and reviewed by the committee. The committee considers these materials to be part of the written record for this hearing. The parties do not need to ask for permission before referring to the submitted materials, but please identify the exhibit label and page number to assist the committee in locating the material when you do refer to submitted materials, to help us find those as you go through your materials. The parties have agreed to the procedures governing this hearing. Each party will have up to 10 minutes to present an opening statement to the committee, with the university administration going first. Because the university administration bears the burden of proving that just cause exists to support the dismissal of Professor Gao, the university will present its case first, bringing witnesses to present testimony. Professor Gao may also ask questions of the university administration witnesses. Following the university administration's presentation, Professor Gao will present his case and witnesses to present testimony. The university administration may also ask questions of Professor Gao's witnesses. The committee members may also ask questions of any witnesses at the conclusion of each witness's testimony. Each party has up to three hours to present their case. Questions and answers of each party's witnesses will count against that time. However, questions from committee members will not count against either party's time. The university administration, which bears the burden of proof, may reserve part of their three hours to present in rebuttal after Professor Gao presents his case. Following both parties' presentations, the parties will each have up to 10 minutes to present a closing statement to the committee, with the university administration going first. The committee will then entertain a motion during the closed session to deliberate on the matter. It will then draft a report of findings and recommendations to provide to both parties as soon as practicable, consistent with UWS 4. The committee expects that all in attendance will be respectful of the hearing process. To the parties, we ask that you remain seated in your designated areas while the hearing is in progress and while presenting your case to the committee. As for audience members, we welcome your attendance, but please note that as chair, I am responsible for conducting an effective hearing and efficient hearing, and am empowered to remove individuals who disrupt the hearing. Please remain in designated audience areas and be quiet while the hearing is in progress. For the committee members and the parties, you may request a brief recess at any time, and I will establish breaks at reasonable and appropriate times. Do either of the parties have any questions or concerns before proceeding? Committee members, any questions or concerns? Alright, that reminds me, phones off. Thanks for the reminder. We will begin with brief opening statements of no more than 10 minutes from both parties, so the university administration will go first.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Chair Galbraith and members of the Active Hearing Committee. We are here today because charges have been filed against Dr. Joe Gao recommending his termination from UW-Lacrosse. Under Wisconsin Statute 36.135, any person having tenure may be dismissed only for just cause and only after due notice and hearing. Under Sopranzki versus Personnel Board, which is a 1974 Wisconsin Supreme Court case, "Just cause exists when a tenured governmental employee's conduct can reasonably said to have a tendency to impair the employee's performance of the duties of the employee's position or the efficiency of the group with which the employee works, or is so substantial, oft-repeated, flagrant, or serious, that the employee's retention of service will undermine public confidence in the employer's service." This is a unique case in a number of respects. The vast majority of material facts are not in dispute, not credibly in dispute. Dr. Gao, through books, interviews, and other media, has admitted to much of the underlying conduct that has given rise to this situation. What has not been explicitly admitted to is supported by documentary evidence in the investigative report and other exhibits. Another unique factor is structural to higher education. It is common for administrators working in higher education to serve in a limited role, which is similar to at will employment, but to have a faculty backup appointment that is distinct from that administrative role. In Dr. Gao's case, the chancellor position was at will, and he has a faculty backup appointment. Dr. Gao was originally hired to be chancellor, essentially CEO of the Lacrosse campus, and he was fired from his chancellor position for violating the terms and conditions of his employment agreement. In most employment settings, if someone were fired for being CEO for engaging in misconduct, the employment relationship would come to a complete end. Outside of higher ed, there would not be a backup position to rescue Dr. Gao's employment status, and Dr. Gao should not be rescued here. It is unique to have a senior level employee refuse to cooperate in investigation. For over 16 years, Dr. Gao served as chancellor and directed others to participate in investigations numerous times. He is very familiar with various aspects of due process, applicable policies, and general employee expectations. However, in the midst of an investigation into his own behavior, he refused to participate, which is an act of insubordination. A few things should be noted. Dr. Gao was placed on paid leave following his termination from the chancellor role in late December. His sole job requirement since then has been to cooperate with this investigation, and he refused directives from interim chancellor Morgan to do so, despite being paid approximately $50,000 during this time period. While refusing to attend in-person interviews, at one point, Dr. Gao offered to answer questions in writing, but as Dr. Gao was fully aware, employees under investigation did not get to direct to the employer how that investigation is performed. It is reasonable for the Active Hearing Committee to make negative inferences regarding Dr. Gao's insubordinate behavior. This case is uniquely headline grabbing because it involves the creation of adult content. Let's clear a couple of things up from the start. As set forth in San Diego versus Roe, a 2004 Wisconsin, United States Supreme Court case, the creation of adult content by a public employee in this context is not protected by the First Amendment. Why? Dr. Gao's activities are not related to a matter of public concern. For example, he is not sharing information, unique information that a public employee may have access to, such as information about fraud, waste, and abuse. Second, the activities are at odds with the mission and purpose of the university and interfere with the efficient operations of the university. Accordingly, the university can long fully take disciplinary action. While Dr. Gao's content creation does not trigger criminal liability, it does not insulate him from employment actions. A quick Google search will reveal several public employees working around the country in fields such as education, law enforcement, and other areas involved in public trust who have been lawfully terminated for reasons related to producing adult content. In some of the interviews Dr. Gao has participated in, he has suggested that seeking his termination in this case is at odds with the university's freedom of expression policies, specifically Regia Policy Document 4-21, Commitment to Academic Freedom and Freedom of Expression. He is incorrect. The charges leveled at Dr. Gao do not implicate this policy. His content creation is unrelated to scholarly matters or matters of public concern. Ultimately, it is Dr. Gao's repeated poor judgment that has led to this point, and that is not a unique issue. An employee engaging in inappropriate conduct is quite common. Ultimately, Dr. Morgan has filed charges against Dr. Gao because of inappropriate conduct, conduct that is damaging to the integrity of the university, insubordinate conduct, and the erosion of trust, conduct that overlaps with the time he was chancellor. Here are a few examples. It is now clear that when Dr. Gao brought Nina Hartley to campus in 2018, a decision he was reprimanded for, he had a pre-existing business relationship with her. They filmed adult content together. This was not disclosed at the time and has only recently come to light. This was unethical behavior and was dishonest towards the campus he was leading at the time. In the book Monogamy with Benefits, Dr. Gao admits to engaging in criminal conduct by hiring sex workers to perform sex acts. In Chapter 5, Risk Your Business, writing under the pseudonym J, Dr. Gao writes, "But because we were not in Nevada, when we employed Tom, we technically had broken the law. As I said earlier, initially, we had reservations about doing this, but our two latest adventures had made us feel no guiltier than if we'd made a bet on a football game or smoked a joint at a friend's party." The first problem with this comparison is that hiring sex workers involves people, not things. Second, 38 states have some form of legalized marijuana, and 38 states have some form of legalized sports betting. Only a few counties within the state of Nevada have legalized prostitution. To the extent this comparison is intended to suggest evolving social norms, it is misplaced, and bragging about violating the law is not helpful to the university. Dr. Gao was fully aware that his conduct would be disruptive, both personally and professionally, and prologue to Monogamy with Benefits, the following statement appears: "Imagine, for example, what would happen if we posted one of our videos on the internet for anyone to see? Our careers would likely be ruined, and much worse is that the lives of our families and friends also could be impacted significantly and not in a positive way." His behavior was premeditated. Despite knowing the likely outcome of publicly posting content, and even after the 2018 reprimand, he chose to engage in conduct that has led us to this point. Dr. Gao is an intelligent man, a former chancellor, current faculty member of the Communication Studies Department, yet he has cherry picked information that he has shared with media outlets. He has referenced due process rights being violated regarding the termination of his chancellor position, yet he is fully aware that position is at will. He has indicated surprise that he was not invited to speak to the president or board before being hired as chancellor, a process completely separate from this one, yet he has not shared that he rejected all invitations from Dr. Morgan to discuss this matter. He suggested to reporters that he was accused of producing porn on university computers. That allegation does not exist in the charging document. Dr. Gao is a communications specialist, so it is hard to believe that his actions have been carried out in good faith. Tenure is a privilege, and that should not be taken for granted. Under UWS 7.01, which addresses faculty dismissal in special cases, it starts with a declaration of policy that states the following: "University faculty members are responsible for advancing the university's missions of teaching, research, and public service. The fulfillment of these missions requires public trust in the integrity of the institution and in all members of the university community." I understand that Dr. Gao's dismissal is not being sought under UWS 7, however, that declaration of policy is still very important and instructive. Dr. Gao's behavior has undermined trust on campus and from the public at large, and his conduct provides just cause for termination. Thank you.
Professor Gao, your opening statement, please.
Thank you. Before we begin, I want to thank the members of the Faculty Senate Hearing Committee for coming here on a national holiday. And I asked to hold the hearing in late May, when you all were still under contract, but classes were done, but interim Chancellor Morgan told me that this is the only date that all the members of the committee were available. So Carmen and I are very grateful that on a very important day for our country, you're giving up time with your families and friends to be here. We're also very grateful to the other people who've come here today to witness this extraordinary event. Since interim Chancellor Morgan banned me from campus in January, I've not had the opportunity to be around many UW-L people. And when I was chancellor at the university for over 16 years, I greatly enjoyed the privilege of collaborating with a wide variety of colleagues. I'm proud of the great university we made, and it's good to be back with you, even off-campus under such serious circumstances, so thank you for the commitment. I want to begin by acknowledging that, yes, my wife Carmen Wilson and I created a series of sexually explicit videos and books. We did so on our own time, using our own money. And as I'll show, we did not intend to profit from sharing those videos and books with other people. And most importantly, we certainly did not want to force anyone to read or view them. We respect that many people do not wish to view sexually explicit material. So we were clearly disappointed to see that the prosecution in this case has entered into evidence sexually explicit images from our videos. We hope the prosecution is not going to force anyone here to view those images, and I would suggest if you are going to present them, that you give people a warning. If you don't want to see that kind of thing, you can leave the room. I'm very sorry about that. The Wisconsin State Statute that has brought us here today, UWS Chapter 4, says a tenured faculty member has all the constitutional rights and privileges enjoyed by any other US citizen, and can only be dismissed for just cause. The statute further states that the burden of proof for establishing just cause is on the administration. I hope you all agree that we're fortunate to live in a state and a country that affords us these protections. And please keep in mind, as we conduct our hearing today and tomorrow, the burden of proof is on the administration. Even though the burden of proof is on the administration, I'm deeply grateful for my opportunity to just to show just how irrelevant, inconsequential, misleading, distorted, and downright false their charges against me are. I will demonstrate that they are even willing to lie to strip me of my tenure. Twice in the statement of charges, they say that Carmen and I deleted information from our university-issued computers prior to returning them to our university-issued computers prior to returning them to UWL. Not only did we not delete any information from our computers, we never returned them to anyone at UWL. That's because our computers were seized from my office on Friday, December twenty-second, by UWL Police Chief Alan Hill, carrying out orders from UW System General Counsel Quinn Williams and UWL interim chancellor Betsy Morgan. The administration knows this, and yet has the audacity to come here and charge in Carmen and me with something we couldn't possibly have done. Please keep this in mind as you evaluate their case. Ultimately, you will see that there's no need to hold me accountable because Carmen and I have not broken any laws or violated any policies. Rather, it is the administration who must be held accountable for their improper and unethical behavior in this Chapter Four process. But who really is the administration here? Please consider the following relationships and chain of events. Universities of Wisconsin system President Jay Rothman, acting under pressure from powerful state legislators, filed the original complaint against me. Please recall that President Rothman's complaint alleged I had improperly filed state of Wisconsin financial disclosure forms. And then consider how dramatically different the charges against me here have become. Attorneys in the UW System's Office of General Counsel assisted interim chancellor Betsy Morgan in responding to their president's complaint. The Hush Blackwell Law Firm was hired to investigate President Rothman's complaint. It's hard to believe interim chancellor Morgan retained such a large external law firm with over one thousand lawyers and over twenty offices nationwide without guidance from the UW system, but that appears to be the impression they are all attempting to promote. Hush Blackwell subsequently hired FTI Consulting to conduct an analysis of the computers that were seized from my office on December twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, five days before President Rothman filed his complaint with interim chancellor Morgan. Remarkably, FTI Consulting is a six billion dollar company that was involved in investigations of the Bernard Madoff fraud scandal, the steroid controversy in Major League Baseball, and the historic Bush versus Thor two thousand presidential election case. I don't know about you, but I'm stunned that such high-powered, prominent law and consulting firms were brought in to investigate whether I failed to submit accurate financial disclosure forms. Although I've not seen the contracts with these firms, they are being kept secret. The voluminous reports they have produced lead me to believe they are being paid tens of thousands of dollars, maybe even more than a hundred thousand dollars for their time and services. When I was a UW chancellor, I frequently received complaints about how taxpayer money was being used, and I wonder how the hardworking taxpayers of Wisconsin will feel when they learn just how much state money is being used to silence a single tenured UWL professor in the twilight of his career. But were the investigators really just looking into my financial disclosure forms? After being granted unlimited access to my email account, expense, and travel records, leave reports, personnel files, and computers, none of which were related to the initial complaint, and then interviewing several people who worked closely with me, the investigators produced an over three hundred page report, here it is, that led interim chancellor Morgan to file the chances, charges we are discussing here today. Please remember that none of those charges relates to the initial complaint. In composing the charges, interim chancellor Morgan was assisted by attorneys from the UW System General Counsel's office, and now, as we've just seen, one of those attorneys is here arguing the administration's case, and another of the UW attorneys is advising the hearing committee. Anywhere else, this would be considered a serious conflict of interest. Given all these UW assistant administrators and lawyers working together, does it sound like the deck is stacked against Carmen and me? You bet it is. But the two of us have an ally the administration does not have. We have the truth on our side. And once you learn the truth, we feel confident you will have no choice but to decline to participate in the administration's conspiracy to take away my tenure. After all, tenure is based on the quality of one's teaching, research, and service. These bogus charges have nothing to do with that, and they raise the question, do faculty have the right to engage in free speech in their personal lives, particularly on contemporary social media? I hope that you will vote in favor of that essential freedom rather than help to suppress it. Carmen and I have been waiting for this day for a long time. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to present our side of the story.
We will now hear the parties' presentations with the university administration presenting first, um, so we may start by calling up.
Our first witness is going to be Jerry Boies. We're going to send him a note to dial in, um, since he's going to appear by video. And just to give a little advance, the exhibit I'll refer to is one oh one C, uh, starting on page seventy-nine, which is Mr. Boies' report. Good afternoon, Mr. Boies.
Hello, good afternoon.
All right, so we're gonna, um, do you, well, let me just back up here. Will you please provide, uh, introduce you. Your name is Mr. Jerry Boies. Will you please provide a brief overview of your background?
I'm Jerry Boies, I'm a managing director at a consulting firm called FTI Consulting. Uh, I am a, uh, forensic examiner and testimony expert witness in digital forensics. My first bench, over twenty years of experience performing digital forensic examinations. I've acquired and examined evidence extracted from hundreds, if not thousands, of devices. And I currently lead our emerging technology initiative at FTI, both this on, uh, upcoming cloud databases, but have a firm foundational cast in, uh, physical devices, including Windows and Mac app, uh, Apple iPhone and Android and other network devices.
And what were you hired to do in this particular matter?
The scope of my assignment was to examine forensic images that were acquired from what I understand to be, uh, three devices, two owned and used, uh, sorry, two used by, um, Dr. Joseph Gao, and one used by Ms. Wilson.
And I mean, again, I'm going to ask that exhibit one oh one C, um, be displayed specifically page, uh, seventy-nine. With you on video, I'm not sure exactly how that's going to work, but, um, basically I'm referring to your investigative report that you submitted, you know, from the work that you conducted here. And what I would-
I'll be back in a minute.
Great, thank you. And what I would like to do is to, um, explain the findings that are presented in your report, please.
Sure. The-
Briefly summarize.
Sure. Yeah, so the three devices that I just mentioned involve a, an IMAC, which is an Apple desktop device, a Apple laptop MacBook. Those two were assigned to, um, Dr. Joseph Gao, and then another Apple MacBook assigned to Ms. Wilson. And the artifacts that I was able to uncover as part of my examination or search for, uh, photographic activity, um, stemmed originally from the IMAC desktop computer. And there, I was able to find evidence of a PDF document called Xhamster Co-Performer Release Agreement, I believe. I don't know if I have that found exactly correct, but I recognize Xhamster dot com as a photographic website. So that was embedded within the PDF file name. And since that was an artifact just indicating access to the website Xhamster dot com and download of a PDF file entitled with that, I went to search for that file and found it in the trash bin on the IMAC computer, on the actual PDF document itself. And when I opened the PDF document in a safe and forensic way using my tools, I was able to, uh, substantiate the nature of that document, and it reflects basically what I would suggest is a, um, co-performer release, and it did contain Dr. Joseph Gao's name pre-filled in that PDF document. And so that was, um, what was present on IMAC computer itself. On the two laptops, uh, we found, um, a password vault that contained artifacts indicating password credentials saved for a number of what I was able to determine as photographic websites. Um, the list is contained in my report on page five. They include Pornhub, Van Van, Xhamster, Hatterbee, Redto, Newborn, and Xvideos. Those that, those artifacts, um, indicating that passwords were saved on the MacBook, um, were resident on both MacBook devices, um, the one assigned to Dr. Gao and the one assigned to Ms. Wilson. One last finding that came later, after discovery of the, um, Xhamster Co-Performer Release Agreement, was to, um, request the logs from a printer because we did have indicia of that document being printed from the IMAC machine, or later that was January forty-sixth, um, some weeks later after receiving the Mac device images and examining those, followed up with the request for the printer logs, and the printer logs also corroborate a, um, the print activity on the IMAC. I was showing that that same document, the very same document, um, with that title, Xhamster Co-Performer Release Agreement, that PDF was printed, um, on the same date that it was actually uncovered in the trash bin. Um, in other words, the metadata indicates that it was, um, put in the trash bin on January fourth, and the printer activity also was on January fourth. The, the full URL for that print activity indicated that it was printed in Rock Bay Hall, that's how we were able to isolate the specific print, it was Canon C three five six IF, and, um, those were the same logs that were pulled to corroborate the, uh, general activity. So, um, that summarizes my overall findings in terms of the artifacts that I was able to uncover.
Thank you, Mr. Boies, that's all I have.
Any reader questions?
Mr. Boies, I've read your report several times, and I just want to make sure I understand what you're stating. So when you say, what do you, uh, when you say the document was last located in the trash bin of the IMAC computer on January fourth, twenty twenty-four, do you mean you found it there, or how?
Yes, that's where I found the document, was in the trash bin. And I'm sorry, um, I'm not clear if this is addressed to me.
Oh, I'm, I'm Dr. Gao, yeah, yeah.
I, I-
Okay, I don't know whether you can see me or not, I, oh, I'm sorry about that.
That's okay.
So you, I, I'm a bit confused with that because I think in the same report, it says you didn't get the forensic images of the computers until January ninth.
That's correct. Yes, the-
So how could you?
So I won't talk over you.
No, no, I, I, I guess I'm misunderstanding. I thought you said that you found the document in the trash bin on January fourth.
Uh, let me clarify. So the metadata they associated with that document in the trash bin was January fourth, and when I received the forensic images on January ninth, um, it contained the full historical record of everything on the laptop. So I'm not examining the physical device itself and uncovering the document on the device, but it's rather uncovered from the forensic, forensic image taken of the device.
Okay, and so then, the issue is, and in the report, you say that I, Joseph Gao, printed that form on January fourth, correct?
Um, can you help me through the, um, prosecution section or, or I can sit up? I just want to refer to the right part of the report.
It would be page four of the report. And you state, on point two-two-one E, "My analysis of the CUPS print jobs artifact shows that also on that same day, which would be January fourth, twenty twenty-four, Dr. Gao printed the PDF document using the La Cro, UW La Crosse printer resource known as the Canon C three five six IF device located in Rock Bay Hall."
Yes, I understand.
So you stand by that?
I'm examining the computer that was assigned to, uh, Dr. Gao, whose profile was being used on that machine in order to initiate the print activity. So I do stand by the, uh, conclusions that originate, or sorry, derive from the computer artifacts.
Okay, did you know where that computer was on January fourth, twenty twenty-three?
So this was from, yeah, yeah. So, um, I do not know where it was physically, um, but this is referring to the IMAC computer.
Yeah, the, on the desktop, yeah, big computer.
Correct, the desktop, yeah, which does physically report me.
Okay, this is the same computer that was taken from the office by university police on December twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. It would be impossible for me to print that form on January fourth. Moreover, on the, um, autofill database in the Safari web browser, which is also on what do you mean by you were able to recover this information? Are you referring to the login credentials?
Uh, referring to the artifacts that reflect password credentials that were stored for these websites.
Okay, so do you have the actual ID login and the password?
No, that was not available. Just an indication that a password was used in order to access these websites. Apple does encrypt and secure the usernames and passwords, those are typically not exposed even for, uh, for forensic use.
And do you know when those accounts were established, or how the passwords were on the computer?
No, sir.
So that could have happened really at any time, before you got the forensic images?
Yes, sir, that's correct. There was no, um, timely metadata available, and rarely is all of the metadata available when the activity, all carving is used. When I say I recovered this, this had to be carved from- this had to be carved from an area of the operating system that wasn't typically available. So there may have been some efforts to delete it. I don't know the nature of how it ended up in a deleted area that needed to be recovered. But the tools I used were able to carve that information back so that I can study the artifacts. And this partial, when we do this, it's partial over that best.
And is this the same information identical on both laptops? Because one of the laptops was mine and the other laptop was issued to my wife Carmen Wilson?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, it seems that the same list of websites were present on both laptops for the same artifacts that I studied.
Thank you, and could you determine when those laptops were last used? Was there any browsing history?
As I mentioned in my report, there was no browsing history in the, where I would normally find browsing history for those types of artifacts. So while I saw plenty of browsing activities to other websites, I did not find browsing history to these particular ones. And I do, I would have expected it given the password vault because you have to visit the website mentioned, the listed websites mentioned in order to enter username and password credentials in the first place in order to have it saved into the password vault. And not to mention the artifact around the download of the Xhamster document, I would have also expected a browsing activity to that too. So it doesn't comport. But some likely explanations or some possible explanations could be using incognito mode because when a user activates incognito mode in the browser or some private tab development, it's just that Google Chrome calls it incognito. Everyone on board might be familiar with that. But those typical traces of web browsing visits are not recorded when you're in that mode. Or since a user is able to delete that, those web browsing visits manually, they could have been deleted manually for anything that appeared on a non-incognito tab.
So we have those two speculations. Could there be a third reason that there was no browsing to any of those sites?
And that would be inconsistent with the findings that I have mentioned.
Yeah, but you didn't find any browsing. I mean, if you want to say incognito, that could be anything. Now, to focus on my wife's computer, was there any browsing history at all on that computer?
Yes.
There was?
Yes, sir. If I recall correctly, yeah. I mean, non-pornographic website visits, I seem to recall that there was. I don't have the forensic image in front of me.
And you would have no way to know that she was issued that computer when she was offering to do some work for the U W L Foundation. They never took her up on that. That computer was taken out of the box, looked at one time, put back in the box, and never used at all. You wouldn't have any way to know that, would you?
I don't know where that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Is there any redirect from the university?
I just have a couple of quick questions in terms of, you know, trying to clarify dates. If you look at your section of findings, two-point-two, and if you look at A, and you say I located a Chrome downloads artifact on Dr. Gao's iMac computer, this artifact indicates that on November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, Dr. Gao used the Chrome browser on this iMac desktop to download the PDF image. That's a November twenty-twenty-three date. And then when we jump down to E, I just want to be clear. And did you say you don't have any of the forensic images, you know, with you right now to potentially clarify dates?
Oh, no.
Okay, because what I'm, you know, what I'm trying to clarify, because solidifying dates is a very, you know, valid thing to do. In E, you say my analysis of the CUPS print job artifact also shows on that same day. And so in that sub-E where it says same day, you know, in the prior paragraph, it says, you know, January fourth, twenty twenty-four. And my, you know, question is, could that also possibly refer to the November twenty-seventh date above?
Oh, it's possible. Having, you know, having reread this later, I just assumed that based on the sequence, I meant January fourth, but I should have been more explicit. I could have been, when this was originally written, referring to bullet A under two-two-one. But I don't have the images in front of me in order to verify that.
And is there any way, you know, I guess I would say in the next, you know, twenty-four hours, given, you know, that we, the time frame that we have for this hearing, that you could potentially clarify that? Because, you know, we want the committee to have the most accurate information available and notwithstanding the accusation of corruption and conspiracy, given that we've worked with Dr. Gao for sixteen years, oftentimes for the Office of General Counsel, and that's not the kind of conduct we engage in. We'd like to be crystal clear, you know, regarding the dates.
Yes, I can hear that.
Okay, great. That's all I have at this point.
Could I have one more? In your report, you didn't include some information that was provided to Hush Blackwell that is in one of their reports. And it talks about a large volume of files, a few thousands, that you found on one of these computers that were not pornographic. They were rather unusual. The world knew and things of that nature. Do you recall that?
I recall sending Hush Blackwell some files. I don't remember the types of files that were contained inside.
Why did you put that in your report?
Oh, I did not determine the types of files. They asked for an export of the files that they conducted to the P to determine the types of files.
And in your report, you do have a disclaimer that you did not do an independent audit of the authenticity of the materials that were provided to you, correct?
I don't remember using that language to put into the page I would pull it over.
That would be, let's see. It's in the introduction.
Section one-point-seven.
Yeah, one-point-seven, thank you, thank you. "In compiling my report, I have not conducted an independent audit or verification of the information, forensic images or digital evidence collections provided to me."
Yes, I see that.
Yeah, and so that literally means what it says. You, all you know is you've got these forensic images and you have to assume they're accurate and nothing has happened to them, right?
Yeah, that's not uncommon for a forensic shop, one forensic shop to do an acquisition and another to do the analysis. We do QC the forensic images that we receive to make sure that they're consistent with the dates and serial numbers and devices that are on the chain of custody form. To that level of cross-checking and confirmation did occur. But the upfront initial stage, since we were not involved at TI, we did not perform the acquisition stage validation and authentication. But we did not find anything unusual with the rescue which is our share of this.
So you just stated there is a chain of custody form. Can you explain that, please?
Yes, for chain of custody details. So understanding the origin of the devices, who they belong to, the distillians, in other words, and also the types of devices are sorts of things that would be provided to us in terms of the acquisition details.
And did you have any information about how the computers were obtained from my office?
No.
All you really know, correct, would be that Data Narrow, another firm had the computers and they made the forensic images.
Right, yeah, the scope of my assignment is to examine the artifacts on the device in order to determine findings consistent with my scope of examination.
Okay, thank you very much, that's all I have.
Nothing else?
Great.
All right, so thank you, Mr. Boy, for your attendance today.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, we will call Linda Dickmeyer. Patrick, you may have to turn it on on top.
Is it on?
Yes, no, it's on, thank you. Thank you for being here this afternoon. Can you please tell the committee your name and role at U W LaCrosse?
I'm Dr. Linda Dickmeyer, and I'm a professor and chair in the Communication Studies Department at U W L. And that's the department that Dr. Gao is currently tenure in.
And how long have you served as the, in the chair in the Department of Communication Studies?
I'll be entering my fifteenth year as a departmentship.
Is this, is that an elected?
It's an elected, re-elected position.
So the committee understands, can you briefly describe the mission in your department?
Sure. So Communication Studies itself is the study of and the process of human communication and studying message-related behavior that may be written, verbal, or non-verbal in nature. So what we try to teach our students are the various contexts in which they understand, create, and decipher effective and ethical communication. And this would be in the context of organizational professional communication, interpersonal communication, public communication and advocacy, and media studies.
I understand that until, you know, December, end of December this past year, that Dr. Gao was working as chancellor. But have you ever interacted with him in terms of any, you know, teaching within your department?
Yeah, so from the time that Dr. Gao came to campus, he had expressed an interest in being somewhat interactive with students in the classroom. So early on, he, we did try to provide some opportunities for him to either be a guest speaker in classes or even serve in a role that, for lack of a better word, was a co-teacher. And so he was never an instructor of record, but in several classes, we found instructors who were willing to have him come in on a semi-regular basis to share his expertise about the content of that particular class. So when that did happen, he usually came in once a week. And in some cases, the class was a back-to-back class. And so he would join the students for both classes.
And how did that go?
Well, I do know that as time went on, it got harder and harder to find people who were willing to do that. But the biggest concern that folks have, including my own experience in this role, is that the understanding was, regardless of what the class was, he would be the instructor of record, was the main teacher. And so he was supposed to come in and provide information that was relevant to that particular class. So each instructor would provide weekly PowerPoint slides, maybe reduced notes, and even discussion-based questions related to the content. It became pretty clear that he wasn't interested in the content of the class. And it really was just an opportunity for the chancellor to come in and visit with students. So there was sort of a disconnection between content. And there was always a concern with timing, especially when the class was back-to-back. So the instructors would give him either twenty to thirty minutes at the back end of one class, and then that same twenty to thirty minutes at the beginning of another class. So always in the second class, he would go on and on and on. And it was very challenging for our instructors to politely ask the chancellor to leave. And ultimately, the biggest concern was the second section would always fall far behind. And eventually, people were questioning the role of what content expertise he was providing.
Thank you. And if, you know, if Dr. Gao stays on at the university, what would he be teaching in his first year?
Okay, so definitely, in all fairness, he has PhD in Communication Studies. And it's my understanding that he hasn't been an instructor of record for probably upwards of twenty years, maybe. So in terms of the things that he would teach, we feel most comfortable that he would be able to quickly get up to speed and teach our general education CST one-ten class, which is effective communication. And that class is heavily, has a heavy component of public speaking as well as group communication and interpersonal communication.
Excuse me, and in terms of, you know, that potential teaching assignment, does it mean anything, you know, potentially concern you about that assignment?
It does concern me because the students, especially in the fall, don't always self-select into a section or by person. So this is a very captive audience, very vulnerable audience of incoming freshmen. That would be in CST one-ten. We already have evidence that he has a hard time tracking or prepping in terms of how to stay on task. And that would also be a problem in CST one-ten. It is a standardized syllabus. He would have to be able to follow the direction of the course director as well as maintain the assignments and the direction of the syllabus. And again, as a freshman-level course, I'm not really sure what we could expect in terms of having the notoriety that would follow him into that classroom.
Have any statements that Dr. Gao has made in interviews or articles concerned you about what may occur in the classroom?
So I've been keeping up to speed on like the most recent interviews and so forth. And he's very candid and certainly feels free to discuss, you know, what he's doing in his private life or in his hobby. But in one recent article, an interviewee, I think it was this late article, asked him, no doubt, when you go into the classroom, you know, it could be awkward for students, what do you, how do you plan to handle that? And he says in that interview that, well, he would address it and he would open it up for questions so that students could talk to him about that. And I'm very concerned, again with a captive audience, that that is not the place for him to talk about what he does with his hobby.
And during the time leading, you know, I think historically, I think everyone at this table knows that there had been an announcement from Dr. Gao last September, I want to be accurate, that you were going to be stepping down from?
August.
August, okay, thank you. After it was announced that Dr. Gao had intended to step down from being chancellor, did he ever reach out to you and express a desire to teach any Media Studies courses?
Yeah, let's just go back a little bit in the fact, too, because prior to his removal from the chancellor position, when he did announce publicly that he was stepping down from chancellor, in that same speech, he announced to everybody that he would be returning to Communication Studies to teach media classes. This was news to all of us. And I did reach out to administration and nobody knew that, you know, he was going to make that announcement and further say that he was going to teach Media Studies. And this created concern even then about his collaboration within our department and having no communication with me or anybody else about having a place in our department. And then after he was removed from campus, I did receive an email from him, I think it was February, that said something in line of, I know it's difficult to schedule classes, so here are the classes that I can teach as you're making your fall schedule. That was the only time I ever heard from him. It was also at a time where I was unable to reply. And he proceeded to list four upper-level Media Studies classes. And he is not an expert in Media Studies. And we have four very valid and professional Media Studies experts who have spent the last ten to fifteen years getting their PhDs. getting their PhDs and doing research in what is current and relevant in the area of Media Studies.
I've been asked a, you know, straightforward, potentially difficult, you know, question to answer, but do you want Dr. Gao teaching in your department?
I do not want Dr. Gao to teach in our department based on my past experience and observations of having him in the, in the classroom.
Have any other members of your department expressed concerns with Dr. Gao coming to the department?
Yeah, and once again, this extends to before the, the removal from his chancellor position. Even back then, folks were saying, I don't know how he thinks he can just come into a department and with some sort of privilege to say what he's going to teach. That's not how it works, that's not how it has ever worked. And that made people concerned right way about his collaboration and his professionalism with his potential colleagues.
And were there any other comments after he was removed from the chancellor role?
We did, you know, as, we're a very collaborative department, and so we recognize, you know, the difference in what does this, the difference between what people teach and what they do in their spare time. And we had a meeting where we discussed, what should we do when the semester starts? In anticipation, we didn't know if it was going to be a lot of press there and so forth. And people really expressed more than anything their concern with having him just as a colleague in our department because of the ways, what we knew about him. He also like was no longer asked to present at student organizations because there was never anything new. And sometimes he had a hard time separating his professional and his personal life when he would be in front of students.
Thank you.
Cross-examination.
Yeah, thank you, that's all.
Yeah, cross-examination.
Well, I must confess, this is very surprising, Rhonda. I thought we were great colleagues, and I really enjoyed being a part of your classes. I think I was a part of your husband Scott's classes. Rhonda Leahy, I never perceived that I was forcing myself on anybody. And I, I don't know, I mean, there are some other faculty members there. I think you may remember, I would often say, I'll come to your class and visit with your students if you'd like. I, I really don't remember things the way you're describing them as far as somehow I was imposing myself on classes. I don't, I, do you-
I don't, I don't think I said you were imposing yourself. You asked if we would let you come into the class, and we provided an opportunity for what we called, for lack of a better word, to be a co-teacher. And in those cases, it became difficult for folks to manage their classes because you would not come prepared or actually respond to or answer the questions or talk about course content. And instead, you would, especially in second sections, monopolize the time.
Wow, I respectfully disagree with you on that. And nobody ever said a word to me that, hey, you're not talking on the topics matter of fact. Rhonda would say, make sure you cover X, Y, and Z because it's going to be on the test.
Sorry, I was gonna, you know, try to politely object and indicate that Dr. Gao is currently providing testimony. He's not, you know, asking a cross-examination question.
Okay, thank you, UW System General Counsel's office. I mean, rephrase that. Did anybody like Rhonda say to you, Boy, this is a real problem, like Joe?
I'm not going to talk about other people and minutia of things. I'm here to report on our experience with having you in our classrooms.
Okay, and let's turn to the question of my returning. I don't have that email in front of me, but I guess I did send you an email in, I believe it was February, when there was some ambiguity about, you know, the original plan was that I would have a sabbatical to prepare for teaching, and we'd return to the classroom in the spring of 2025. And then when Chancellor Morgan had me banned from campus and placed on an administrative leave, which I still don't understand why, I was told, well, now you can't prepare anything, and you gotta wait. And so I sent you a friendly, and I sent it to Carl Kunkel, email, you'll remember, right?
Yeah, that is the email.
And I offered to teach a whole range of things. And I said, based on my reading of the catalog, I think I could help with X, Y, or Z. And I said, I know you have, it's complicated. I'm the chair of lots myself, and it's fantastic work. So I, a little puzzled that you're characterizing that as I was like stipulating. And do you recall in that email, I said I could teach in any format you would like? I could do in-person, I could do hybrid, I could do online. However, I can help.
And these are all things that we would decide, should you maintain your position. But the point that I'm making is the assumption that you can teach Media Studies as a, you are not a Media Studies professor.
Have you read my dissertation?
I, oh, yeah, I do, I have.
It's Media Studies.
So-
And I published thirteen articles in Media Studies.
I'm gonna make the same objection again.
Yeah, so-
Well, this isn't a courtroom, right?
It's not.
I mean, we're gonna, I'm trying to convince you and other people, so, but maybe we'll end up in a courtroom, I, I don't know. So, great, I'll, I'll let it go at that thing.
I, I just want you to ask a question in light of the audience, but-
Well, I did ask her, do you recall? I said I would teach in any format you like, any days, times you like.
Right.
The topics I gave just very general, in the interest of being helpful, not imposing myself.
Right, and I was waiting for you to answer.
So the, the classes listed were four classes that you would need recent, current. Media Studies is a very fast-changing area of expertise. And so I, we did, we are concerned, we have no evidence that Dr. Gao would be able to teach those high-level Media Studies courses at this time of his career.
So you don't think my experience being interviewed by the New York Times, the Washington Post, the Times of London, CNN, NBC News, Nike News, Nightline, that wouldn't be good experience?
Those aren't theories or context or content that we teach in Media Studies courses.
Okay, I don't know what to say to that one. Thank you.
I need a question.
Thank you very much. Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, I just, I just really want to say that, you know, when I say, do I want to teach with Dr. Gao, is a very different question than what you're all deciding. And I know you're the folks that are deciding that, so thank you for that.
I think, I, I need a recess. So I'm gonna take, let's take a temporary recess. We'll come back here. That's alright. We all do that, it's okay, I have a biology. So we'll, we'll recess for around ten minutes until one minute.
Will you please state your name and title?
My name is Dan Jane, the Associate Vice President for Human Resources at the Universities of Wisconsin.
And will you briefly describe your duties, please?
Yeah, our office provides direct human resource support from the University of System Nutrition offices and then policy guidance for system-wide universities.
Thank you. How long have you been in your current role?
Including my time as interim, I think since 2020, yeah.
And prior to coming to the Universities of Wisconsin, can you give some employment history there as well?
Sure. So for about the past 22 years, I've served as an attorney or as a human resource leader in public education, right, mostly K-12, and then the past five years here at System. So, yeah, I've either been advising public sector employers, counties, municipalities, school districts, and technical colleges, or served as a human resource leader.
And what other public entities have you performed human resource tasks for?
Sure. Counties, cities, towns, villages, numerous public school districts throughout Wisconsin. And so we've worked a little bit with some technical pathology as well, and then, you know, some manufacturing dental practices.
And during the time that you have worked in HR, have you been involved in investigative activities?
Numerous investigative activities, both in my capacity as an HR leader and also in my capacity as an attorney advising HR leaders.
And you may be able to answer this question, you know, both in a couple of different ways. When you were working, let's say, for example, with Milwaukee Public Schools, did you ever hire outside legal counsel to help conduct investigations?
Yes.
And why?
You know, a lot of it is there's a capacity issue. Sometimes there's a, you know, depending if it's a high-profile individual, you want that resource of someone who might have a particular expertise in investigation. So I'm both hired outside counsel, my role is an HR leader, and bet the outside counsel has been asked to investigate.
And in your opinion, in this particular case, did it make sense to hire outside counsel to help with this investigation?
Absolutely. I think when you have an allegation against someone who was a sitting chancellor, you want to make sure that you're appropriately resourcing that investigation.
From your perspective, what are some of the purposes of conducting an investigation?
Well, you're conducting investigations so that you know whether or not there's, you know, a valid reason for employee discipline, right? And so you want to hear both, you know, what is the allegation and what underpins that, and also what the employee has to say for his or herself so that you know whether or not there's an explanation for the conduct in question.
And what are some of the effects if someone chooses not to participate in investigation, particularly an individual who is a subject of a complaint?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, if someone doesn't participate, then usually you would draw adverse inferences about their conduct, rather than if they fail to explain what it is they've done or failed to do. And more importantly, you know, an employee is bringing for the institution so that a directive is not optional to participate in investigations.
Are investigations borne across the Universities of Wisconsin?
Yes.
And can public employers direct employees to participate in an investigation?
Yes.
In your experience, is there any set period of time that an employee must be given before being interviewed in the context of an investigation?
No, I mean, you know, there is, you know, typically a right to have someone present during investigation, but that is not allowed to impede the process of an investigation. You want it to be as timely as possible, right, both for the sake of the institution, where you want to reach a conclusion, and also for the sake of the employee, right? You don't want an investigation to drag on unnecessarily long.
And, you know, you mentioned that someone has the right to bring someone with them to an investigation. Is that right explicitly to bring an attorney, or what, can you describe that right, please?
Not at all. Usually it's to bring someone who, you know, may sit there, it could be a second set of years, so to speak, and even if you bring an attorney to investigate a meeting, their role is to listen, not to answer the questions. The employee still has to be present, still has to answer the questions, and the attorney is really there as a witness, so whether that's an attorney or an advisor. And then by time, as an attorney conducting investigations, we would frequently have to advise an employee's counsel, right? What their proper goal is, which is not to interfere with that employee-flier relationship, which is if we have questions for you about your conduct, then you have to answer them.
And if you recall, given your experience working with public sector employers, you know, what's the shortest amount of time that you can recall an employee being given before they were going to be subjected to an investigatory interview?
You know, there have been times where we have, you know, betted the words of conduct and we'd actually go, you know, I think an example, a school district who could actually alert the union, bring a union representative with us for the employee, and then interview them on the spot. Basically provide them with a representative.
So within a single day, essentially?
Within a single hour, yep.
Thank you. I'm going to ask that what's been marked as Exhibit 104E, be put up on the screen, please. And I'm going to, I know this is kind of a strange setup of sorts, but have you seen this document before?
Yes, I have.
Okay. Can you scroll down to the second page of the document, please? A little bit further up, please. Thank you. Right there is good. So I understand you're, you know, you have had an opportunity to, you know, look at this document before, and just for purposes of kind of summarizing, one of the things this document concludes... So this is a February 7th, 2024 letter that was directed from Dr. Morgan, you know, to Dr. Gao. And again, I know that you've had an opportunity to look at this document. Do you agree with the conclusion here that Dr. Gao behaved in an insubordinate fashion by not participating in the investigation here?
Yes, I do. I think he was given multiple warnings, as I read through that letter of prior opportunities to meet and participate in the investigation, and he repeatedly refused or delayed.
And, you know, using information that's presented in the letter, the letter states that, you know, Dr. Morgan initially asked Dr. Gao, directed him to participate and cooperate with investigators on December 29th, and then again, the final date, you know, that he was offered to potentially participate was February 8th or February 9th. How would you, you know, describe that period of time, again, from your experience?
I mean, that's a significant amount of time in terms of trying to find someone whose role is to sit in the investigation and listen to your answers, right? It's during all that time, Dr. Gao was, you know, a paid employee of the University of Wisconsin, he's on administrative leave, and his sole task would have been to participate in the investigation. And so the idea that he could not find an adequate representative to sit with him during that time is not credible.
And do you recall ever having a senior-level employee refuse to cooperate in an HR investigation?
I mean, not particularly. I would say if someone, if a senior-level employee refused to participate in an investigation, usually because they were resigning.
And do you recall any time in your time at UW when an employee has been terminated for reasons related to insubordination?
Yeah, I think we had a case relatively recently, in 2020, of a faculty member who refused to wear a face mask during a COVID pandemic, and the grounds there were directly for insubordination, he failed to follow a fairly simple directive, and refused to do it after kind of repeated warnings, kind of like this letter, you know, the letter asking him to come in and not participate in the investigation, just do it.
You know, Dr. Gao is a former chancellor, he's currently a faculty member, which would certainly be considered very, you know, a very high-level position within a university system. Do you have any concerns about the, I'm going to say, setting of a precedent that people can just disregard directives to participate in investigations? Do you have any concerns about that effect on the overall institution?
Yeah, I mean, a fundamental function in the employer relationship is that ability to, you know, resolve employment concerns by having investigations, right? If there's an allegation of misconduct, you have to be able to resolve that, which involves speaking with the employee. So if we kind of have a rule in which people can just not participate in the investigation, we would never be able to kind of conclude and wrap up investigations and determine what the appropriate level of sanction is, right? Whether that's, you know, no sanction, if it turns out the employee had a valid reason for their actions, or determine what the ultimate sanction should be. So it's not feasible to kind of have a precedent where you just cannot participate and ignore that request.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Crosses in the nation.
Thank you for coming in. I'm curious, now, how long have you been in the UW system?
2019?
Okay, so about five years. In that time, was there ever an occasion where there was an outside law firm brought in to do an investigation?
Not that I'm aware of, but that doesn't mean it hasn't happened.
Would it surprise you if I said in my 16 years in the system, I cannot recall another time where an outside law firm was brought in?
It would surprise me, even given my experience both as an outside law firm that did investigations for public sector employers and, you know, my experience in public sector HR. It'd be surprising, so...
And were you involved in any way with engaging Hush Blackwell?
I was aware they were being engaged.
Do you know what they're being paid?
No.
Who's paying?
Well, I would imagine the university system. I mean, I don't know who in particular, whether that's lacrosse or the system, I would not be aware.
And I don't know how familiar you are with all the material. Have you read the full report?
I have glanced through the full report.
And it took a lot of time and people. With your professional expertise, could you estimate how much it costs to produce that report?
I could not. I've been out of the private practice of law for some time, so...
And I'm wondering, did you know, I can't remember the woman's name, but your deputy HR person?
Kelly Cook.
Yeah. There was a meeting on December 20th that Kelly, it was 21st, that Kelly Cook and Deputy General Counsel Lattis had with me to establish... This was the first, you know, contact with me about the situation. So you're aware of that?
Yeah, I had actually completely forgotten about that, but yes, I was aware of that.
I mean, I would imagine that'd be a big deal, you know, that people would be talking about that. Are you aware that from that meeting, the complaint came that I had not filed accurate financial disclosure forms? That was the basis, that meeting, for the complaint that President Rothman made?
I would have to review any documents that came out of that meeting. I'm aware that meeting happened, and I am aware that that was going to be given in the process, but I don't have too thorough recollection of what the outcomes of that are, other than that it, you know, it was obviously the start of this process.
And so we have a complaint that's fairly straightforward. Did he earn more than $1,000 from books or videos, and did he fail to report that on his financial disclosure forms?
I would say that would be one of the concerns, yeah.
Well, that's what the complaint says.
Yeah, I don't have the complaint in front of me to reference.
I mean, I don't know why that would take a very expensive outside law firm to determine whether or not that happened. I mean, in my experience, we've got some great investigators in the system office, and why didn't they just ask me about that as Deputy Counsel Lattis did in the meeting, and I explained I didn't ever make, we didn't ever make more than $1,000 on any of that? Matter of fact, they seem to be pretty confident.
So the cross-examination part has to be about...
Okay, I'll save it for, yeah.
Has to be about...
I'm sorry, yes, okay. The 2020 faculty case with the mask, which seems really not comparable, but did that person have tenure?
They were a tenure-track position, I am not sure.
Okay, yeah. That's all I have.
Just a couple cleanup items. Mr. Chaney, given that Chancellor Gao was essentially CEO of the La Crosse campus, would you expect him to have any particularized knowledge about investigations that may occur, let's say, at Madison, at UW-Wife Water, or other institutions?
I would, we don't discuss investigations at one institution with other institutions, so I wouldn't expect him to have knowledge.
And you've been in the room this morning, correct?
Yes.
And so I don't feel like I'm misstating anything, and feel free to correct me, Chancellor Gao, but I believe allegations like system engaging in conspiracy have been thrown out here, wouldn't one reason to hire outside investigators would be to sort of buttress any sort of allegation about, you know, impropriety, conflict of interest with, you know, someone, the sort of neutral nature of an investigator into a case?
That's correct. I mean, I think, you know, when you think about it, a chancellor's relationship with system office, using an outside law firm kind of removes that personnel aspect of people at the system office that a chancellor may have interacted with, and it creates a little bit more impartiality.
Thank you.
Would it be fair to say that there was political pressure to do an outside investigation?
Not that I'm aware of.
So you don't know about the statements that Senators Hutton and Nass made the day after I was fired?
I may have read about those in the press, but I, you know, I don't believe that that has a direct bearing on the actions we take as a system.
Another question for you. We have that letter, but you don't really know the full conversation that was going on about my participation in the investigation?
That's correct. I'm not aware of the direct conversations. I did read through the letter, and I have no reason to doubt that, I would say, as a chancellor who probably has given directors, him or herself probably understood that a letter that said that there could be employment consequences, if you don't know why, you're probably well aware of what that meant.
And have you read in the report, the email that I received from Hush Blackwell attorney saying, "We want to interview you not on campus, we want you to come to Chicago, or Minneapolis, or Madison, and we want to sit you down for three or four hours and record you and ask you questions"?
I've not read that email, but... But obviously, you know, you aren't supposed to be participating in the investigation as an employee. There was some time you were being paid to do that.
Would you think, as a former attorney, that would be pretty intimidating of a person that they would say, "I'm not going to go to interrogation with people I don't even work for without an attorney"?
And so they were the assigned investigators, and I, you know, to be honest, I think it's always intimidating to participate in an investigation. They're not called processes, so I don't doubt that, but, I mean, obviously, it was the role of them to investigate, they're the assigned people, and you as an employee had an obligation to cooperate in that investigation.
And obviously, if I were to bring an attorney, I would have to pay that attorney.
You could be, and you're free to bring a representative of your choosing, doesn't need to be an attorney, and nor does, you know, nor can an attorney interfere with the process of the investigation.
You wouldn't know that the Foundation for Individual Rights and Expression contacted me and said, "We will provide you an attorney at no cost, we need some time to do that", that really doesn't come through here, does it?
No, but again, right, it is not a right to counsel in an investigation, it's a right to a representative be present, it's really two different things. It's not a court of law, it's an interview with representatives of the employer to determine whether or not you're engaged in particular conduct.
And also, one final question. There is no discussion here about we need to complete this investigation by a certain date. So that I didn't refuse to talk to them, I said that I will wait till I get an attorney, they concluded the investigation before that happened, that was their choice. And as we had heard, I did offer to answer their questions in writing. I don't know that that, does that represent refusing to cooperate?
Absolutely.
You think that somebody saying, "While I'm waiting for my attorney to be provided, I'll answer your questions in writing, I'll give you the report from Amazon on my book world, he's..." That would be refusing to cooperate?
Absolutely, yes. If you're asked to come and sit for interviews, that you can be asked questions and respond to them, and you say, "No, I will only do it on my terms", you are absolutely refusing.
I respectfully disagree. I hope the hearing committee doesn't see it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Danny. Nothing for you.
Thank you.
My next witness is gonna be Dr. Gao.
So now this gets interesting. Are we playing by the rules of the legal system or not? If we were in a court system, I would not have to testify. But as I said earlier...
If you were in a criminal case, you would not have to testify. If you were subpoenaed in a civil matter, you would absolutely have to testify.
Well, it sure feels like a criminal case.
I mean, I'm not the one who's admitted to illegal activities in my book, so...
Well, let's, all right, let's have the conversation, and we'll see where it goes. And I hope you'll forgive me, me, but there may be times when I have to be very legalistic, because as I said, we're not in a court today, but in the future, that might happen, so I hope you understand.
I have tried to make these questions as direct as possible, and they can be answered in a yes/no fashion.
So are you planning to, in your, when you present your case, are you planning to testify on your behalf? Where they would be able to ask you questions?
I don't know how you make the distinction, is wait, Harrison, as he's talking, I mean, I certainly want to talk, I might be, but I'm okay. If you ask me some questions, and I'll, if there's something I don't feel comfortable answering, I'll indicate that, and you'll, you know, I don't want to appear to be dodging this.
I mean, just to be clear, if you would like to refuse to answer any questions, you know, you have a right to do so, right? I don't actually have subpoena power here, so that, let's just, I guess, pause and let me make sure we're clear on that. If you would prefer not to answer questions, I think the majority of issues to be addressed here are also in documentary evidence. So I will say, if you're uncomfortable answering questions, and you would, you know, like to decline to do so, I would say, you know, refuse to do so.
I'm willing to answer questions, but we were obligated to provide a list of potential witnesses, and my name is not on your list. So I think you would all agree, this is a bit of a surprise.
There was in, there was the, at the bottom, it did say, right, that the university reserved the right to include other witnesses. And so perhaps this is what they're referring to.
And you're getting your advice from another member of the UW system?
In UWS, I was gonna point, so...
Again, we'll...
In UWS IV, it indicates that the committee is allowed representation by a member of the council, and that's what we did. And we talked about this at the pre-hearing, so I don't want to bring that up anymore. Is that understood?
Oh, true.
Thank you. So you could say no, and that's fine. We won't hold that against you, I'm not...
I'd like to hear the questions, and, you know, at the end of the day, this is a persuasive process, and if they need to persuade the committee that I should be fired, I need to persuade you that I should not, so I do not shrink from that responsibility.
And these have not been set up to be, I sincerely think, you know, pretty straightforward questions to sort of clarify the factual record. So my first one, during the time that you were chancellor, you were routinely required to address personnel issues, correct?
Yes.
You were involved in hiring and termination decisions, correct?
Yes.
As chancellor, you provided directives to employees regarding a variety of issues. Is that fair?
I think that people that worked with me in the cabinet were way more involved in that than ever, than I ever was. And if I did get into that kind of thing, you and I, we worked together on those kind of things, so I would always use the UW's just the general counsel.
And I mean just general directives, right? Like even your cabinet members, "I need you to do this, I need someone to do this", not necessarily in an investigation context, but just general directing people, you know, to do various jobs.
I wouldn't say that I was not a very directive leader, and I hired good people, and I let them do what they needed to do, and I think the university was very successful as a result of that. So I, it was rare that I was like, "This is my idea, and I need to have somebody do X, Y, or Z." That's just not how I worked.
Thank you. Following your termination, President Rothman filed a complaint against you, and Interim Chancellor Morgan initiated an investigation pursuant to UWS IV, correct?
That's right.
I'm gonna ask again that Exhibit 104E be presented. And, you know, this is the same letter we were just talking about with, you know, Mr. Chaney, and this is the letter that was sent to you from Dr. Morgan on February 7th, 2024. It's the letter that informs you that from her perspective, you have waived the right to participate in the investigative process because of, you know, various requests to participate. And really, the purpose of me putting this up here is, this letter references a lot of communications. You received the communications that are referenced in this letter, correct?
Yes, and there's some that are missing.
Absolutely. You can certainly supplement to the extent you think, you know, there's something that may not have been submitted that you think is relevant. I'm not asking, you know, for your rationale, but it is correct that you never made yourself available for an in-person interview with the investigators, correct?
I would say that I was preparing to make myself available, but they decided to end their investigation before I had the opportunity.
And we've already established, you know, we've already established that you offered to answer some questions in writing. After the investigative report, you know, I wrapped it and a copy was sent to you, Dr. Morgan offered to meet with you to discuss the report, and you declined that invitation, correct?
That's right.
Jumping down. In the facts that were stipulated, one of the things that we stipulated to is an acknowledgement that you and Dr. Wilson drafted two books, you know, under the pseudonyms Jerry and Jay Hart, Monogamy with Benefits and Married with Benefits, correct?
That's right.
On the Amazon listing for the books, a photo of you and Dr. Wilson is included in the "About the Author" section, correct?
That came in November of 2023.
Okay.
After, oh my, the first book was published in 2016, maybe eight years, yeah.
In Monogamy with Benefits, you wrote that all events described are true, correct?
That's what we wrote.
Do you stand by that statement?
No. We should have said "based on a true story". As a matter of fact, when we first wrote the book, we had that in the book, we shopped it around to literary agents, and somebody said, you know, "This doesn't really get me very excited unless it's a, you say it's a true story." So we changed that. I mean, there are things in the books, and even you all know this, that characters are composites, we took things and changed the order of when they occurred. It's a pretty common approach, it's called creative nonfiction. Or if you're familiar with the 1970s, there's a thing called new journalism, and the writer Truman Capote talked about a nonfiction novel. And so that's the style in which the books were written. So if you're going toward, "We said in the books we did X, Y, and Z", that doesn't prove that that actually happened. The further proof would be on the administration.
Understood. So in the author's note of Married with Benefits, you include a statement that says, "This is a true story", and that you changed only the names and some of the identifying characteristics of the people involved in it. So are you modifying, you know, that statement as well at this point?
Yes.
So those were not truthful statements that appeared in your books?
Some things are capital T true, other things are not.
So, you've received earnings from book sales, correct?
Yes.
You and Dr. Wilson have an online presence under the name Sexy Happy Couple, correct?
That's right.
You post both adult content and non-adult content under the name Sexy Happy Couple, correct?
Those are characters that we play, yes.
Correct, but it's the two of you.
Yeah, that's the, yeah, like the Jerry and Jay Hart, those are characters. Otherwise, you'll notice, with all the controversy and all, everybody knows all about us, those books, we didn't put our real names on them because it's not really who we are in a way.
You've produced and appeared in a number of adult videos, correct?
Yes.
You have referred to the creation of your adult content as your hobby, correct?
That's right.
I think this time he's gonna line up with the picture on Amazon, but prior to 2023, your content was only, only or primarily accessible through sites like OnlyFans, which have what I would call a significant paywall. Is that, is that fair?
That's right.
And then beginning in October 2023, you moved at least some of your content to more accessible websites like Pornhub and Xhamster, which did not have a paywall, correct?
Well, there is a paywall capacity on those sites. We did not utilize that, but you still have to be 18 or over to get there, you have to click on a statement that says, "I do not find these things offensive, I'm here looking for sexual content." So yes, that's where those were in November.
The switch to the more accessible websites resulted in significantly increased views of your content, correct?
Surprisingly, I think we could say stunningly, yes. We never anticipated the interest that came.
And between December, end of December 2023 and the present, you have continued to post both adult and non-adult content on websites such as X, formerly Twitter, and Loyal Fans, correct?
Well, those things are not equivalent, and Loyal Fans, it's a site that is like OnlyFans, where there is a paywall, and people actually have to put their credit card information... and people actually have to put their credit card information in. So that we, that, that was our intention all along. We only wanted people who really want to see this type of material to be able to see it. And then, so that, so it's, it's behind a paywall. X is a fascinating, what I would call, media experiment because there are all kinds of people on there, interested in all kinds of things. And I don't know whether you followed it, but Elon Musk purchased the old Twitter and changed it over. So we're finding that that is not a good venue for what I would call explicit content because it's just, there are a lot of people there who want to use that against you.
Understood. But for example, you know, I know you referenced in your opening that you were, I'm going to use the phrase unhappy. Perhaps unhappy are sort of warning to the committee and the public about the university, you know, including some exhibits that included explicit, you know, content. And those are screenshots taken, you know, from Loyal Fans and then from the, you know, the X site that were not taken from behind a screen wall that were taken, you know, from the public facing side of it, I guess, a lack of a better way to state it. So it, it is correct that even without going behind the paywall on Loyal Fans, explicit content, you know, may be visible depending on how you set up the posts, correct?
Well, now you just blended Loyal Fans and X, so I.
You're right, so let's just stick with Loyal Fans, but that's, that's more, that's, just to be.
If there's anything there that's publicly accessible without paying, it's a mistake. Because there's a box that you check that says, who can see this? And we are always checking only the followers who are registered with Loyal Fans. Now, I don't know whether that organization is not following their rules. You know, they make money when people go there and look at the content. So, but our intent is to have everything behind the paywall. So when I saw your exhibits, I was confused. And I went back into the site and I made sure it's all checked, that it's only the followers. Now on X, I'm not aware that there is any sexually explicit material on our account these days. I mean, we, we, it's just a different community.
Understood. And, you know, I'm glad that you, you know, straightened that out. Just so you understand, I did not, you know, buy a Loyal Fans account or anything and the screenshots I took were from the public.
Gosh, no, no.
I would not go, you know, I wouldn't go behind a paywall and grab stuff just to try to, you know, add to the.
No, right.
Already, you know, sort of built up nature of this whole matter. You receive earnings from viewings of the adult content that you posted, correct?
That is a complicated question. It's a matter of dates and timing. Now, and I want to go into this because there's often a lot of confusion about this. We put the videos onto OnlyFans and Loyal Fans in November of 2023. No one cared. There, there, I think there was maybe $20 that was generated. And we've never got into this to make money. That's not the, the, the point of it. But you have to charge something when you put material because the site needs to take a cut of, of the money. So they have a minimum amount you got to charge. And they won't pay out to the poster until you exceed a certain threshold. And I believe on Loyal Fans and Loyal Fans, it's like $200. So we never, it was, no one cared. Now, in the irony of all time, when the regents fired me and did it in a very public way, I mean, I've been around the system a long time. Usually, you folks call me up and you say, we have this issue and we want to get this quietly disposed of. We don't want to call a lot of attention to it. And then people retire or they resign or whatever. But I got an email saying, you're fired. And they went to the press and said, he's done abhorrent, disgusting, alarm-ringing things. And everybody got interested in that. And overnight, on what was it, December 27th, 28th, we went from like three people following this on OnlyFans to about 10,000. And then some money began coming, but we never received anything until January of 2024. And I want to be very clear on that because it's like your taxes. It's not when you earn the money, it's when you receive the money.
And during the investigative process, excuse me, do you recall when investigators reached out to you and asked you if you'd be willing to sign a, basically a release that would allow them to directly obtain information, you know, from websites about what your earnings may have been?
That release is part of my exhibits because when I get my turn, I want to show people that release wanted 10 years of access to not just the book royalties, to everything about my wife's Amazon account. I don't know a person in the room who would sign away. I mean, is that not an invasion of privacy? That, that seems, I'm puzzled. The books were published till 2016. They wanted to go back to 2012. And doesn't make a less, and so, yeah, we got that release. And we were going to, I, I mean, if they had sent a release that said, we need to see the book royalties from your sales of these two books, we would have gladly signed that. But that's not what was presented to us. So it is a little disingenuous.
No, no, I'm, I'm.
When that gets portrayed as not cooperating.
I don't know if it's disingenuous, but I would, my follow-up question would be, do you think if you had actively participated in the investigation, you may have been able to point that out and say, hey, can we narrow the scope of this release so that we can get an amount of information that I think is more, you know, pertinent to this investigation?
I'm not sure. And at that point, I had said to these people who, I, I don't feel like I report to some outside law firm. I report at that point to the interim chancellor of the university. And I said, let's have all the communication through interim chancellor Morgan. And I was writing to you, you were writing to me. And when I said to you, here's the invest, here's the, the, um, book royalties report, which would be quite a lot for me to fabricate. I mean, that, you've seen it, it's in the.
Yeah, no, I, I think I understand your response. I don't, I don't have any further questions.
Chancellor Morgan did not reply back to me to say, oh, let's, to talk about questions in writing, let's talk about narrowing the scope of what they're looking at.
I'm going to move on to a different topic. In, in 2018, you arranged for a paid campus presentation by Nina Hartley, correct?
I think that is more than well-known at this point.
In, in interview, in, in recent interviews, you have indicated that you developed the idea of bringing Hartley to campus while we were set with her shooting a pornographic video, correct?
That's not entirely accurate. I did not develop the idea. I learned in talking to her that she had talked at campuses, including Dartmouth, UCLA, Berkeley, some pretty big universities. And I, that stuck in my mind. So then when we got to the point in, that, that the system said, hey, do a free speech week event, I thought, wow, Nina Hartley, she goes and speaks again, and maybe she would come to our little campus. And so I thought that was a pretty good idea.
Understood. I think the characterization in the articles, you know, several of which have been submitted, speak for themselves.
Well, wait, if I may.
Actually, I don't have a, I'm not asking you a question right now. And you'll have an opportunity to address any of the issues that you would like to. And, but when you did bring Nina Hartley to campus in 2018, you didn't disclose to members of your cabinet or others that you had a pre-existing business relationship with her, correct?
I would not call it a pre-existing business relationship.
Did, did you pay her to, to perform in, in an adult video with you?
We paid her talent agency to have her be interviewed, appear on a cooking show, and yes, have a, a sex scene, yeah.
So if I worked at a law firm, I could argue. When you brought Ms. Hartley to campus in 2018, again, going on, because you didn't participate in the, um, in the investigative process, but have done a lot of interviews and provided information, I believe you, you reflected in articles yourself and it appears in the investigative report that the normal practices for bringing a speaker to campus were not followed. You know, I believe you yourself stated that typical advertising was done at a more minimal basis. There are comments from those who worked with you that, you know, it was, it was really an idea that was like, this is what we're going to do as opposed to, you know, bringing up the idea and having a conversation about it. So I realize I've spoken a lot there. Would it be fair to say that your, your typical practices were not followed when you brought Ms. Hartley to campus?
I don't think there are typical practices. And I think what you may not appreciate is that Nina Hartley visit was a free speech week event. And then UW Assistant President Ray Cross sent the chancellor's memo saying, everybody should do a free speech week event on their campus. And if you look at the commitment to academic freedom and freedom of expression, the last line of that document says, each campus chancellor is responsible for carrying out this policy. So I thought this is a great opportunity for me as chancellor to do something bold and follow the direction that the system was going. This was just after that commitment to academic freedom and freedom of expression was introduced with great fanfare. And I still am puzzled that people would not see that Nina Hartley visit was textbook, yes, textbook free speech.
So would it be fair to also say, given the description that you've just given, that from your perspective, there was no conflict of interest of having paid her or the agency that she was working for having filmed content and then choosing to engage in a, you know, whether it's a, a speaking opportunity at UW, you don't perceive any conflict. It would be fair to say you didn't perceive any conflict based on your decision to, to bring her out, you know, correct?
No, not at all.
Absolutely. Ultimately, you were reprimanded by President Cross regarding your decision to bring Ms. Hartley to campus, correct?
Oh, and more than President Cross, I would say certain regents that I would be happy to name for you contacted me personally. And one of them wrote an op-ed into the Cross Tribune, which was highly unusual, to scold me.
And you disagreed with President Cross's decision as well as the, the commentary from those regents, correct?
I'm, I'm not sure what President Cross's decision.
Well, you, you disagreed with President Cross's decision to reprimand you. Would that be fair to say?
I disagreed with President Cross's failure to uphold free speech and free expression on a campus, yeah.
Thank you, that's all I have.
So probably no Cross exam for that. Um, do you have other witnesses?
I have one more witness.
Okay.
Do you want me to keep going or do you want to bridge it all? But actually, we're going to request five minutes.
Okay, so it'll take five minutes. It is two and four, so it's.
Yes. Thank you. That's all I have.
So probably no Cross exam for that. Do you have other witnesses?
I have one more witness.
Okay.
Do you want to keep going or do you want to bridge it all? Actually, we're going to request five minutes.
Okay, so it'll take five minutes. It is two and four, so it's...
Okay. We'll see. 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 Okay. We'll see.
Here to initiate an investigation, not a foregone conclusion. An investigation at that point, UW system indicated that they recommended an outside firm as we established it.
I'm going to get asked that my exhibit one oh four E be shown on the screen, please. And so again, this is the, actually if you could scroll to the top, please. This is the February seventh, twenty twenty four correspondence he sent to, you know, Dr. Gao that reflects that the investigation was going to be concluded, that he had waived his opportunity to participate. What led you to ultimately, you know, make that decision? That the investigation is going to be closed and this process needed to move on.
In conversations with with you and others and, you know, talking about what's a reasonable amount of time to give somebody. We all felt that with the full time leave, that it was an appropriate amount of time for Dr. Gao to secure whatever either representation or individual that he wanted to in order to have that. I mean, I think, you know, this committee and Dr. Gao, certainly in his background, you know, were very committed to due process. And the idea that the investigation would allow for some back and forth was crucial to me.
And again, I know the letter concludes, you know, that, you know, that you stated to Dr. Gao that he'd engaged in insubordinate behavior. From your perspective, why was the behavior insubordinate?
I think this is one of those times, and if you give me just a minute here, you know, I think everyone sort of understands the relationship between Dr. Gao and the chancellorhood. I think now we're talking about a very different thing, right? We're talking about a tenure track position. And that's why we're in this hearing. And it's something that I happen to know almost most of the people around this room care greatly about this topic. And the idea here is that for me, as I took a look at it and I stepped back and say, I had to kind of put this conversation into the category of employee, right? It's it's it is a faculty line, but it's also an employee. And so the notion that there would be that level of insubordination and an insubordination that was to this individual's potential benefit, right? That the reason we asked for the investigation is for that back and forth. But there's also this sort of a hierarchy arc to say what kinds of things we expect of any employee, right? Because sure, you know, as faculty, our major obligation is teaching. That's the thing we care the most about. We have scholarship, we have service, but we're also employees of the system, we're employees of the state. And there are things we're supposed to do as employees. You know, we pay our taxes, we do the things that we have to do, and that matters to me. It matters to me as a systematic arc of people's behavior. Any individual behavior rarely concerns me, but the system of behaviors that's concerned.
And during this past spring semester, when Dr. Gao was unpaid, you know, leave for the most part, did you give him any directives other than cooperating to, other than to cooperate with the investigation?
No.
So the sole, his basically is one assignment for the semester and he chose not to do. Is that fair? Were you surprised at all, I mean, given Dr. Gao's prior role as chancellor? Were you surprised by these refusals to participate in the investigative process?
I really was because I know that, you know, Joe was for seven years, ten years, has sat in this seat. And I know that he too understands chapter four and understands the processes. So I was surprised that he didn't avail himself.
Have you, I'll ask you a question here. Have you been surprised at all, given that same rationale and some of the comments that Dr. Gao has made here today about, you know, process?
Yeah, yes, I mean, I, you know, it concerns me that what I've read in the news and today that that Dr. Gao has indicated that it wasn't a fair process. Because I think we've done everything as appropriately as we can to make sure that the process is afforded.
And so ultimately, the, you know, the investigation, you know, you sent this letter, the investigation is wrapped up and investigative. You you sent off the, you know, the report to Dr. Gao and you offered to meet with him, correct?
Correct.
And did he take you up on the opportunity to to meet?
He did not.
And did that surprise you at all?
It did surprise me because again, it's it's kind of one of the traditional steps in the process.
So following the opportunity to meet and that being declined, and then you decided to put together a a charge letter. Can you, you know, explain why you decided to file, you know, charge one, which relates to unethical behavior? What were your concerns there?
So, you know, as Dr. Gao was indicated, this is a big report, it's a three hundred page report, right? And, you know, I read it very carefully and, you know, struggled with what's the appropriate way forward. And I think, again, any single incident, right? Somebody printing something on a printer may not catch anybody's attention, right? Maybe I printed a recipe once, right? It's not a reason why we would dismiss someone from a tenure track position. However, when there is a pattern of behavior that shows a disregard for policy and for a way to be a solid employee, then I am concerned. And when you, so when you talk about ethics, right? Not necessarily what's illegal, but ethics and the reference to how I might behave in the future, right? It's the best predictor of future behavior, past behavior. Our fundamental jobs are as teachers. I am very concerned about the classroom. Very concerned about Dr. Gao being in the classroom, obviously because of this firestorm. But I'm also just concerned on the idea that this is, this is the role of us as each of us as faculty. And that requires systematic appropriate professional behavior.
Obviously, the Nina Hartley matter was, you know, ideal in twenty eighteen. But has you learned even more about that, you know, now? How do you perceive the Nina Hartley, you know, matter? Do you think the campus was misled at all, you know, regarding that? Or does that, does that whole incident concern you at all?
I think what's true about the Nina Hartley for me is the Nina Hartley situation. Is it worried me at the time and it still worries me that I don't think that Dr. Gao fully understands the impact of that decision. That I had read interviews where he suggested that it might have even helped our our enrollment. You know, we have had no, yes, our enrollment's done well, but we have no evidence that that was any player in it. In fact, what we know is our admissions team had to address some fairly hard questions that we have. We continue to hear from legislators that that Nina Hartley decision has hurt the perception of our university and their decision making regarding funding. We've we have, we've had parents and donors again indicating, again, it's not the content. It is, it really was the process followed, right? There can be many wonderful speakers on all kinds of activities that are appropriate for a university in terms of free speech. But Joe's, Dr. Gao's direct involvement in this and the way that it occurred was problematic. It's problematic to me at the time and currently.
Is it surprising to you, I mean, because you've heard, you heard some of the questions that I posed to Dr. Gao? Is it surprised to you at all that he doesn't see a conflict of interest between his prior relationship with this Hartley and choosing to bring her to campus?
Yes, I think that that, it's the kind of thing, at the very least, it sounds bad, right? You know, and again, this is not, this is where it's hard to blend the chancellor role and the faculty role. But, you know, as the chief executive officer, it's not a good look. But even as a faculty member, if I were in a department and I said, I'd like to bring so and so as a speaker, you know, my colleagues would say, how do you know this person? Why is this the topic? You know, how does that benefit our students? You know, there's a much more thorough vetting of who and how comes to speak and what's the, what's the benefit to the mission of the university.
So going to, you know, another charge, charge three regarding regarding misuse of computers. What was, what led to your decision to to file that charge?
So this is one, of course, obviously, I am nowhere near a forensic expert in any way. And, you know, again, you've all read that report. I mean, it's it's a little overwhelming. To me, the important thing again is this sort of arc of behavior, like rules are for other people, not for me. You know, that that fair use statement comes up for every single one of us when we log on to our computers. It's very clear how we're not supposed to use it. If somebody is using the computer for genuine academic research, there's clearance. The people we know who teach human sexuality call IT and say, I'm about to be teaching the segment on this. There are going to be searches on my computer. They tell their chair, they tell their dean. If they're going to be doing research on something, they let people know it's a true academic arc. That all of that information is done as part of being an academician.
Were you surprised at all in terms of email searches to find, you know, that there at least been ads, you know, sent to then to Dr. Gao's email address with, I'll call it explicit items or sex related items?
Again, I think it's careless, particularly in twenty twenty three or twenty twenty four or before that. You know, you know, when I first got my email address, a long time ago, you know, my Mindwolverine's account used to be with my email address. But, you know, about fifteen years ago, I unhooked it, right? Because we now know a lot more about open records, we know about the blending of of being a state employee and our other activities. You know, I I have no personal interaction. My Amazon account is on every, is on everything else. I'm a smart, it's on my personal email. And so, yeah, I think it is, again, it's careless and I think that doesn't speak well.
Do you have additional concerns regarding, you know, the potential of Dr. Gao returning to campus?
Yeah, I really do and I, you know, and I struggle with this. But I I think that, again, the real concern is teaching, right? I think it is almost, and Dr. Gao was mentioned several times that I banned him from campus. You know, he was allowed to come to campus if he had somebody with him, but the point was to reduce the media circus. The point was to allow our faculty and our students to get on the business of education and to not have this swirling everywhere. Because that's what people didn't like and that's what people were saying to me, is we want to get past this. This isn't what defines us. And so that's, you know, that was one of the reasons for it. And so my concern about teaching is the kinds of things that Dr. Dickmeyer referred to. But also it's like, when does this stop becoming all about this and start becoming about education? And this notion that's that what gets brought into the classroom and the perception, the ability to understand how my behavior impacts others? That's what concerns me. I still don't have not read a single thing, and I have read all of these articles, that would suggest that Dr. Gao is concerned about the impact of this on the university. Totally understand that it's, you know, originally it was a private decision. But once it became public, there's been a lean in rather than a than a back off, right? And that hurts the, and it continues there in the person.
Is it surprising to you that in light of Dr. Gao's decision, I understand he disagrees with my characterization of refusal to participate in the investigative process? But ultimately, he didn't make himself available in the dates he was told, in the final, by the final date he was told, that they would still be available. Does it surprise you that he did not make himself available, yet he has participated in so many, you know, media interviews? Including, you know, some video interviews that are over an hour long, directly talking about, you know, the subject of the investigation?
Yes, I think that it would have been, made good sense for his sake as well as for the university's sake for him to participate in the investigation.
And I think this is probably my final question for you. But how would you describe your level of trust in Dr. Gao at this point?
My level of trust in the ability for him to be able to be an effective faculty member is very low. And my level of trust for him to protect the university's best interests is low.
Thank you.
Crossed examination.
This is quite a jumble. I mean, I'm kind of hard pressed to, we want to go back and talk about Nina Hartley, then we want to talk about computers, then we want to talk about, I mean, can you just zero in on something? Like, what is the issue?
For me, the primary issue is reputational harm to the university and the ability for you to be an effective faculty member where you did be retained.
Okay, well, let's talk about that, this reputational harm piece. I read in the Regents meeting materials for the, what was it? About a week ago, they were in Milwaukee. And they had all the financial data. And as you can imagine, I'm not chancellor anymore, but I just can't let it go. It's just ingrained. You do it for that long. It said that enrollment at UW-Lacrosse is at least stable, maybe trending up. Is that accurate?
It's it's accurate, yes.
Okay, so that would be a pretty clear indication that anything I did, the progress I did, has not hurt enrollment at UW-L.
I personally don't see it that way because I don't think you've been able to be here to witness the number of fires we've had to put out. You know, I think that our people doubled down on their effort to to represent the university in the best way. Does it hurt the enrollment overall? Absolutely, you're correct. It has not hurt the enrollment overall.
Okay. And you repeated a real misunderstanding. You know, I mean, we, I talked about a lot of things that you read in the media or interviews or what have you. I mean, I don't know whether anybody read, did you read the profile in Business Insider?
Yes.
Okay, and you might recall that piece begins and talks about Gao is hard to miss with his ever present gold chain. I don't know whether you can see over there. It's silver.
Yep.
And then it says they went to Planet Fitness. We didn't. So would you concede that not everything you read and hear in the media is accurate?
Absolutely.
Okay. Then would it be possible that I never said having Nina Hartley come to our campus helped enrollment? I said it looks like it didn't hurt enrollment. So there's a difference.
There's a difference.
Yes, okay. On the fundraising piece, I saw the other day you had two real big generous gifts. So it would appear that this controversy hasn't hurt fundraising.
I'm sorry to do this in a public hearing, Joe, but some of those gifts were based on the fact that you were no longer chancellor.
Oh, so you're now making deals?
Oh, absolutely not. What I mean is there are people who wanted to be giving to the university who felt free, more free to give it to the university after you were no longer chancellor.
So let me get that straight. They actually sent you, get rid of him and I'll give you money?
Absolutely not fair, Joe. That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying there are people who have been long supporters of the campus. Who, once you were no longer chancellor, said that they felt more free to give their money to the university because they felt better about the future of the university. No one ever said anything about any involvement in you being dismissed.
Okay, but at the end of the day, fundraising is doing fine.
Fundraising is, as you know, about how people feel about the university. And there have been significant hits to how people feel about the university because of all the press associated with this and because of the nature of the work that you and Carmen have been involved in.
Now, you mentioned the press coverage. Did it ever occur to you, and let's go back to Nina Hartley for starters. The story wasn't that Nina Hartley spoke on the campus. That was pretty common. The story was how the Regents reacted.
The Regents and people on campus and people in the community. I I again, think this is one of those things where I personally, you know, think that that was an interesting talk. It could have been handled in very good ways, but people didn't like the way it was handled, including people on campus.
When you say handles, what do you mean?
I think if you would, you know, again, you might recall that the result of much of that was, let's have a committee that works on free speech. Let's have a committee that works on who we might bring here. You know, the the fact that it was much more of an individual choice on your part was problematic for people.
Were you aware that I didn't make that decision on my own?
I was not aware. What I recall is being a member of the cabinet and you telling us a couple of days before she was going to be on campus, that's what I recall.
Well, in reality, it would surprise you to learn that I went to a class, you know, I guess I imposed myself on yet another class that didn't want me. But I went to a class on sexual health promotion. And I talked to the students and the teacher in that class. And they said, what could we do in this regard? And I said, well, I actually know of somebody, what do you think? And they said, that's a great idea. Now, given this climate that we're in, I feared for that faculty member with what's happening in me. I didn't want to have them in the crosshairs. And I said, I'll take the lead on this. And that's what really happened. But you don't know that, do you?
I don't know that, but I'm not sure it matters how it happened. I think what matters is what was the impact of that on the campus afterwards, how that was handled? And what does that mean this many years later? When people are still bringing it up.
And I'm still scratching my head over what impact it had when we have routinely, we have a thing called Sex Week, where there are all kinds of, have you ever seen Nina Hartley's talk? There's a recording of it.
I have seen parts of it, I've not seen the whole.
What do you think?
I think she's a very engaging speaker.
Do you remember what the message was?
I remember it being very sex positive. I don't remember much what it meant.
Consensual sex, the importance of that, safe sex, the importance of that? Aren't those things that are very consistent with the messages that we are always trying to promote?
I think the the reaction of the people from on campus had to do, again, you corrected what the process would be. But it still felt like the chief leader of the campus making a call that had some implications for the campus.
And you didn't consider that Ray Cross had asked the chancellors to have free speech week events?
No, I was well aware of free speech events. I think it is contrary to the way that we would normally involve more people in those kinds of decisions, even if there was a faculty member in a classroom.
And do you think this is at all relevant to why we're here today?
What's the this and that sounds?
The whole Nina Hartley episode, that was, I mean, over five years ago.
The only way that I think it's relevant is for me, it has to do with what I see as a pattern of concern where I don't think you fully understand the impact of your behaviors on the campus, the choices you've made.
Can you cite some other instance of that?
Well, I, for me, it has to do with what's happened since your dismissal. But that's prior to that, it's like, you know, the fact that you are, you know, you are the key representative of the university. And now, of course, there are things having to do with chancellorhood, but this is about faculty, it's about the faculty position.
Well, and how do you feel about faculty and free speech?
It's a little too vague. Can you be a little more specific?
I mean, would you not agree that it's very important that tenured faculty have broad free speech rights consistently with the First Amendment of the United States Constitution?
I think that there's a difference, there's a subtle difference, but there's a difference between free speech and academic freedom. This is not an academic freedom case. And we're talking about reputational harm to the university and behaviors that are associated with policy violations. That's what I'm focused on.
Well, again, on the free speech issue, where do you stand? I mean, the Regents' commitment to arguing freedom and freedom of expression, do you think that's a good policy or not?
I am a huge proponent of free speech. I am a huge proponent that tenure is a privilege, not a right. And I care about how our employees act.
Would it surprise you to hear that we've gotten a lot of communication from all the people you just talked about? Alumni, students, current, even current faculty and staff, and it's been very supportive.
No, that doesn't surprise me.
Why not?
Because I think they didn't read a three hundred page investigative report. I think the general idea is that, you know, that what you do on your free time is absolutely up to you. It is the public nature of this and the repeated concerns regarding policy and the reputation to the university that's at hand here.
So which particular policies did I violate?
I think that's really clearly now in charge of.
Well, you can tell me.
Okay, I'm concerned about the relationship between the behavior of a faculty.
Excuse me, can you, if you're going to ask questions about a specific document, will you bring it up so that it can be viewed into?
No, well, I don't know, are they all together?
By the way, just for, to clear the air now, I was chancellor for over sixteen years. I know how things work. Did you write that letter?
Absolutely, I was in collaboration with the attorneys.
Who did the first draft?
I'm pretty sure they did the first draft.
Thanks.
But I stand behind it.
So we are?
We're waiting for them. While you guys bring that up, I can speak a little bit. The the charge letter essentially has three buckets of concerns. But one is the unethical and potentially illegal behavior. The second is the insubordination, and the third is the computer, the fair use of computers. So in my opinion, there are concerns on each of those.
Okay, why don't we take them in a reverse order? Violating the fair use, or not fair use, I can't remember the name of it, it's the information technology use policy. How did I violate that?
Because the policy clearly says the storage, display, transmission, or intentional or solicit receipt of material is may be regarded as obscene, sexually explicit, or pornographic.
So where's the pornographic stuff?
My understanding is that there were sites, that were pornographic sites that were visited and that there were emails that indicated, you know, sexually explicit materials. And that, to me, I thought was a compelling argument.
Okay, but you haven't seen any, what was it, Justice Potter Stewart said pornography, you know it when you see it? Anything that is pornographic? You're going on the report that Mr. Guai.
Correct, I'm going on the report.
Okay, and we're going to talk about that when we get to my part. Let's move into this so-called insubordination. Explain that to me.
So I feel like we've covered it really well up until this point. But the 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 reality is that having been, just being the active chancellor in the role of chapter four is to say, please, you're required to collaborate with the investigators. And multiple times you indicated you would not be doing so, or that you were going to be getting your attorney. And after six weeks, we said, this needs to end.
Does it say anywhere in UWS chapter four that a person is required to be interviewed by people outside the UW system?
I don't know that.
It doesn't.
But again, I would say to you, just, I think that it is because you were chancellor that this became so high profile. When some, a traditional faculty member has been charged for something within UW-L, as you are well aware, the investigation often takes place at system and sort of one level removed. To me, this makes sense that it was one level removed from system.
Why didn't you use UW system investigators where admittedly would be, yeah, I I would talk to them. I mean, wouldn't it be a little bit intimidating to have some, as they call it, white shoe law firm saying, we want you to travel to Chicago and, I mean, that's just downright strange.
As Mr. Chanon said, I think it's all intimidating. I think it would be challenging regardless. I think that this added a level of of distance from system, given your role as chancellor, that was appropriate. It was system who offered the opportunity and I found it amazing that it makes sense.
Who's paying for hush black?
I assume system.
Okay, so you didn't hire them?
Correct.
Yeah, and you don't know what they're being paid?
I do not know what they're being paid.
How about FDI consulting?
I do not know.
How about DataNarrow?
I do not know.
Now.
But I also don't know how much it costs when we hire system to investigate, so.
I know you haven't been chancellor long. But I think you learned right away, you're responsible for the investigation.
Yes.
Matter of fact, I think in one of your emails to me, you noted that. I think in the press, didn't you say, I am leading the investigation?
I don't recall saying, but I absolutely am responsible, yes.
Yeah, so it's a little unusual that you don't know any of the details.
It's unusual that I don't know the details of who's paying for what. I am well versed in the actual findings, which was the point. The way that any of us would read our investigative report.
And when you got the complaint from the President of the UW System, did you ever entertain the notion that you could say, "I'm sorry, but this isn't substantial"?
Yes.
You did?
Absolutely.
Can you talk about your thinking there?
No, my thinking is that, as you and I have been involved in multiple personnel situations over the years, then investigation is the cleanest, most appropriate way to go forward if there are concerns raised. Let's find out if there is a concern. I think it is to everyone's benefit. Even with a high price tag, it's to everyone's benefit.
Well, the original complaint, do you think the investigation found any support for that?
I think the original complaint was really twofold. It was one, in the original, was, you know, concerned about the financial enumeration. But if you recall, there's a second paragraph in there about damage to the university's reputation. And I think that one has been very clearly shown.
How so?
In the ways that I've already eliminated.
How has it damaged the university's reputation?
That everywhere I go, people are concerned. Besides just the jokes, which are no longer funny, but it's, we don't want to be known as porn U. We're the top comprehensive in the UW system. We want to be known for the quality of our academic programs. This is a problem. It's a problem when our donors say they won't give money. It's a problem when our alumni are embarrassed. And yes, this too shall pass. But the fact that, again, Joe, you don't seem to understand that this was problematic, concerns me. The fact that you don't think there's reputational damage.
If you could show that it hurt enrollment or fundraising, I would concede that, but you can't, can you?
I can tell you that we've had donors who flat outside that will never give another penny to this University of Jokau's teaching.
Now, again, you haven't been Chancellor for very long. I can recall several occasions that people, I mean, it was a pretty frequent occurrence, where people would say, "I don't like this, so I'm not going to give you any more money."
This is plain out of-
And you know, you learn, you just have to take that with a grain of salt. Because you can't please everybody, and we don't run the university that way. It's all about the students. And it sounds like the students are coming.
The students are coming. I think it's unfair to characterize the students as being okay with this. Some students are okay with this. We've also heard from current students and, again, former students who have made it very clear that what they would like for their degree to be associated with is a high-quality university.
Now, you were Chair of Psychology for how long?
Twelve years.
Did you ever have instances where students came to you and they said, "I don't like my teacher"?
Absolutely.
That's a pretty common thing, isn't it?
Very common.
And what do we tell them?
We tell them, "Please go have a conversation with your faculty member, and if you'd like me to be there with you, I'd be happy to be there."
So we don't just have students tell us, "I don't like something", and then that means we change it? Same way as we don't just have donors tell us they don't like something and we change it? Same as we don't have legislators who tell us they don't like something and we change it? Aren't we having quite a controversy or right now, or challenge around DEI?
I think you're underestimating the impact of this. I think you and I have walked very different paths since December 27th.
Well, I can't know how you're thinking, but you are here, are you not, asking this hearing committee to say this person should be stripped of their tenured faculty position?
I am.
Okay, then there's a big difference in what I think and what you think. I don't have any power in this.
What you have is due process, which is why we're all here.
Okay, so we've talked a little bit about the computer use. And as I think you would have to concede, not all is as it seems in Mr. Guay's report. We've established that there are some issues about dates. We've established that, you know, he doesn't know where the computers came from, correct?
I didn't follow that part. What I think that the report is clear is that the computers had been used for material that it would be sexually explicit or pornographic. That's what I take from it.
And you don't, I mean, the notion that Carmen's computer was never used or taken from my office, that doesn't give you some pause to wonder about the accuracy of that report?
I think that in its entirety, the report is very sound. I think these are people who are professionals in computer forensic.
So, and then this notion of insubordination, that's not a black and white issue, I don't think, do you?
Yeah, actually, I think it's pretty black and white on this one.
So I don't know that you've forgotten this, but do you recall that I told you I'm waiting to hear from FIRE about my attorney? And the next thing I know, and I gave you the Book of Royalties report, did I not?
Correct.
And I said to you, while I'm waiting for the attorney, if they want to ask me some questions in writing, I'll reply.
Yes.
So how is that not cooperating?
Joe, you were explicitly, multiple times, asked to meet with the investigators. You had six weeks. You did not have to have an attorney, as Mr. Chanon said. You needed someone to be with you should you choose to have them. And you've been through this on my side of it, you've been through it on your side of it. It is standard operating practice to try to wrap this up in a fairly timely manner.
What's the hurry?
I think you're well aware of what the hurry is.
You banned me from campus for the semester. I was very surprised when this report was concluded. When was that? I don't have the exact date, but we can look it up. I mean, I think it was in March.
Correct.
Why was that?
Because everybody, I think particularly the campus, including our faculty senators and our faculty, were very interested in making sure that this moved along in an appropriate pace. This has been going on a long time.
Could you appreciate that I feel like that's a setup?
Actually, no, I can't appreciate that.
Really?
It does not feel like a setup to me when someone's been given full notice of something, where you could choose to either hire an attorney on your own, as opposed to get a free one, or you could bring somebody with you to participate in an investigation that allows you to tell your side of the story. I don't understand that, why that would be a real reason.
Do you remember other cases? I, again, I do, where I was in the lead on a Chapter Four, working with our colleagues at UW System General Counsel. How that usually- How that usually went? I mean, it's a pretty straightforward process, is it not?
I mean, there are multiple steps to it, but yes, it's a known process.
There you go. Have a complaint, complain,
Do you want to take that?
Make a decision on charges. You have that offer of the informal meeting.
Right.
Which is really, I've always, don't you find that odd? It's called an informal meeting when there are lawyers there? I mean, I don't think that's an informal meeting. Would there have been anything I could have said to you at that informal meeting that would have changed your mind about firing me?
I don't know, Joe. I think that's part of the problem with you not cooperating with the investigation. It doesn't, you know, that is your chance to respond to that.
But what would it have taken?
I can't answer that. I don't know, Joe. I don't have the information.
Now, I've got lots more questions. And as you know, Betsy is my witness for my part of this proceeding. And I don't know where we are on time. 3:40. Well, how long are we here today?
Kind of open-ended, but we, you know, we're getting long in the day, and this is your last witness. So we can go, we'll probably just finish with the university's side today. So you can finish whatever you want to do with this witness today. We can go back to your side, and then we'll probably end for the day, I think.
Are you going to redirect or?
I have one question I'll redirect, I will ask.
Okay, and as long as I can reserve-
Absolutely.
I have one question I'll redirect, and I just want to be clear in sort of setting the foundation that I'd like to limit any cross at this time to this one question, you know, that I'm asking, because I'm not going down a bunch of other, excuse me, roads right now. Can we bring up Exhibit UWL 101C? Can you scroll down to page 45, please, once this opens?
Do you want to describe what this is?
Yeah, so in the realm of, you know, computer issues, you were asked whether or not you would see any emails or other things that you would deem inappropriate for the workplace. And so what I'd like to ask is to just scroll through this and ask you, is this, is this an example of the type of material that you would not expect to see on a work computer?
Unless somebody was doing research on this topic, I would not expect to see that on a work computer, considering it.
Thank you, that's my only question.
So do you know where that came from?
My understanding is it came from your email, if I remember where that is in that report.
And do you ever get email messages you never asked for?
Yeah.
I believe we call it spam?
I'm well aware of what spam is. I also know that when there's been interaction, it's more likely to change the algorithm such that you're getting more on those certain topics.
Really? Do you not get messages from legislators of all parties that you never asked for?
No, if you're asking me if I get email I didn't ask for, yes. I'm also saying that I personally don't get any email like that. Not even from-
I wonder, I'm seeing some looks on the faces of others that maybe you've gotten some stuff like this that you never asked for. And also, Betsy, are you aware that those products are sold at places like Target, Walgreens?
Yes.
Yeah, right?
That's not what the fair use policy says.
So I don't, well, could I have never, ever even seen those?
Perhaps.
Like, you're the Chancellor now. How many emails a day do you get?
Not as many as I got when I was Provost, it's delightful.
Probably talking like a hundred.
Probably.
So you don't, you look at the-
It goes to-
Whose is coming from and you just delete it?
I go to the clutter, I take a look at it to make sure it's not something that's germane to the job, and yes, I move on.
So would you believe me if I said the first time I ever saw this material was in that report, that somebody went into my email and found? I don't, I mean, I would not have, you know, we're not in the market for sex toys. So-
I don't have an answer for you, Joe.
Do you think that's fair to bring this into this conversation?
Yes, I think it's fair.
You do?
I do.
And how is that?
I think that although you have made it very clear that you think it's an inappropriate use of money, I think when you have hired an external investigator to do a thorough investigation and they come back with this kind of information, that all of us, the panel, me, need to take that seriously. And yes, I understand you might not have looked at it.
So you would fire somebody for junk email?
I would fire someone for multiple concerns regarding ethical behavior, insubordination, and fair use.
That sounds pretty weak to me.
It might sound up to you.
Do you have any other questions for her?
Well, as I said, I-
Related to-
Things beyond the scope of this issue, and it sounds like we are concluding now. Yeah.
Any other, okay. Any committee questions for now? Sounds like she'll be back more soon. All right, so we are going to adjourn for today. Oh, I hear Doug, that's your case, yes.
Is it nine tomorrow?
Nine o'clock tomorrow, where we can be, if y'all want to come back.
But I have to go shoot my live. Thank you. Basically just, you know, react to what happened today, and go whatever.
I'm kind of hanging out right now, but I'm fixing what I can.
I'm kind of hanging out right now, but I'm fixing what I can.